Good evening, everyone. It is 5:31. We are going to call the Committee of Whole to Order for April 24th, 2023. I believe most of you, you should have the agenda in front of you. At this point, we're going to start with roll call. And I'll start with that. And we'll wait to Alderman Prude, Alderman Malone-Marshall, Alderman Baron, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Ocinga. Alderwoman Swanson, Alderman Marzak.
Present.
Alderman Naveras.
Here.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Cobb's, Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Present.
Alderman Brown. Okay, we have, uh, ten, nine, yes, nine present, five absent. We do have a quorum. Next at this time will be item three on the agenda, public comments. Public members are invited forward. We don't have a sign up sheet tonight. Anyone that wishes to come forward, please come up to the microphone, state your name, and you may voice any of your concerns, questions, or opinions for the Committee of the Whole. Is there any public comment at this time?
Good afternoon. I'm Josh Riley. I'm the case manager for Community Services at Catholic Charities. So I work with transitional and rapid rehousing, housing the homeless who've come through our program. We're hosting a summit on homelessness. I have a flyer here, and I can distribute these to the council members if they want, and also a sample agenda for what we're going to talk about there. So we have a continuum of care in Kankakee County where all the service providers meet monthly in order to discuss the different topics that we have present in social services. But one of those main focuses is homelessness. And so we go around all the different agencies, Catholic Charities, Fortitude, KCCSI, Salvation Army, and talk about status updates about what we're doing, how's transitional housing going, how's rapid rehousing going. And it became aware during that meeting that, during the course of these meetings, that it would be nice if the community knew sort of all the different ways that social service agencies are benefiting Kankakee County, the things that we do well, the service gaps that we do have amongst our agencies. And so this is just a way for us to share probably all the different services that we offer and then some of the ones that we don't, you know. So this is for invitation only, so I just sent an email to many of the members that are here, and I have flyers as well. If you want to distribute them now, or you can leave them by the table.
If you want to pass them out, or at least to the corners, that's more than welcome to.
There's an Eventbrite, a link that I sent. I didn't have the input, actually, there's no event. Thank you.
Dawn Brewers, Fortitude Community Outreach. I'm here with my board who's standing behind me. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. When we set out to serve the homeless six years ago, we would never in a million years have imagined just how hard it is to provide shelter to the homeless. But we persisted, and this year we served around eighty different individuals and provided them about three thousand nights of shelter and six thousand meals. Guests have returned to permanent housing and achieved gainful employment through our services. Last year, the City of Kankakee reluctantly approved for us to have, provide one final year of sheltering on Dearborn, and they committed to help fund the soaring cost of construction in Washington so we could have a permanent shelter. But for these last eight months, we have been told in agreement for an ARPA grant and approval was coming any day, any day, any day. In the meantime, we've been facing increasing waves of misinformation, scrutiny, attacks, and demands that hurt our organization and our entire homeless population. So we now realize the city has not been working with us in good faith, and the council will not approve this grant. We know the escalating attacks are so that the funding can be denied without political fallout. So if you make us and our homeless look bad, it makes you less bad to deny the funding. But continuing to fight for the rights of the homeless and for a shelter as much as I would love to in Kankakee will only result in irreversible damage to our organization. Being the sole target of blame in the middle of an economic crisis, pandemic evictions, and while being only one organization among many homeless providers is immensely unfair and hurtful to those of us who are only striving to help the community. If we were approved for funding, we know we would just continue to face attacks and false accusations simply because we exist. It's appalling that we are being blamed for an increase in homelessness and accused of actually shipping people homeless in from out of state. People aren't coming to Kankakee just to stay at Fortitude. We have concluded that we are simply not welcome here and will not be allowed to provide overnight shelter in the City of Kankakee. So therefore, we are greatly grieved to announce our only option right now is to restructure and provide day services only. We will continue to work at returning to overnight sheltering outside of the city, hopefully within the next year or two. But in the meantime, we will seek an office elsewhere and provide as many services as we are able in the only ways we are allowed. The literal meaning of Fortitude, of course, is strength in adversity, and we will continue moving forward with Fortitude. It will caution you, though, that day services are not going to be the solution that you are looking for. The problematic individuals who are looking to hide away are not going to sit inside a building all day where there are rules and restrictions. Because of this decision, we are respectfully requesting that any further consideration on this ARPA grant for Fortitude cease, as any further discussions will only be harmful to us. We thank those of you who have advocated for us. We will communicate with our current donors and grantors soon, and we'll post a press release tonight. We remain committed to working collaboratively to address homelessness, and it is more important than ever that city leaders please join us by attending the summit on homelessness so we may afford to create a homeless plan that works. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to item four, approval of the minutes. You should have those in front of you. Is there, those are obviously just passed out. If you have not had time to review them, we can approve them at another meeting, or if you'd like to, we can approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2023.
Motion to approve, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Ocinga.
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes from January 23rd? Seeing none, I'm going to do a roll call real quickly. I'll start to my left. Alderwoman Malone-Marshall, Alderman Baron.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderman Ocinga.
Aye.
Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Naveras.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We do not have any presentations tonight. We'll move into item six, which is old business. We have a couple items there. You should, excuse me, have in front of you, review of allocated funding to date. So this was provided by the Comptroller's Office. This is as of, I believe, March 31st. Okay, I'm getting a nod, which is good. So this is the money that has been allocated. You will also see through March 31st, the amount that has been spent, actually, so why, I'll give a good example. I'll just pick here, Kinkke United is a good example. If you look down there on the first page, we allocated the $300,000 for that. The $34,726.65 has actually been spent of that money, leaving the balance in the far right-hand corner. If you go through, you'll see there's two pages of that, and you'll see that those balances are there. So to date, if you look on the last page there, $15,052.449 has been received by the city. Total allocated funds to date is $12,809.705.36, which leaves total funds remaining to be allocated, $2,242.743.64. And then you'll see all the programming that has been allocated to date there. Is there any questions or comments as you review that? And if not, feel free to take a look at it. You can bring it up at the next city council meeting, or reach out to myself or Comptroller Alderman Baron.
Do we have additional expected expenses for Francine Driver, is that?
We, I do not believe, I think we're close to, I think we're closed out on it. Comptroller Kubal, I hate to say a hundred percent yes, because sometimes when any construction project happens, there's a little bit of carryover before final payout is. But I think we just did final payout on that like thirty days ago.
Mayor, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, one second, hang on, sorry.
Mayor, that's what I'm thinking as well, but I'm too not a hundred percent sure, but that's where my mind went.
But we will, we'll verify that, but I believe for Piggish Engineering, we just had our final closeout on that. We usually wait several months after the project's completed just to make sure there's no outstanding bills that come in, any things, repairs that need to be corrected. But I think we're close, so that is, I should find this here, where it's, there you go. So there's a good example. That's money that could be, once we know final closeout has happened, that we can relocate that money back into the ARPA funding. We did have an advantage there. If I remember, a lot of that savings there was, we hit budget for Aqua doing some work there, having to maybe do some of Aqua's work, and they ended up picking up that cost and doing the installation of a lot of their water lines and stuff through there. Any other questions? Okay. So keep this sheet. We'll continue to do this on a quarterly basis for you to understand where everything's at, and this will help us with some further discussions as we move forward here tonight, too, so. Okay, also, we had under old business, we had ARPA funding for Fortitude Community Outreach. That was, I had put that back under old business from the standpoint that at our, at our council meeting from the last meeting, that amount had not been allocated at the meeting, so I just pushed it back to ARPA committee for discussion. In light of the comments that were made earlier, I'm not sure where we go with discussion on this right now, so I was opening it up for council tonight to talk about where we wanted to go, what council wanted to do, when we wanted to take this back to city council for discussion and approval. But I'm listening to what was made, comments earlier from Fortitude, and again, I'll let you chime in if you want. At this point, it's sounding like they're wants, they do not want to have discussion about this at this point, because there's a different direction that they're choosing to go. So with that, I don't, I'll just leave it under old business for right now, unless Fortitude or anybody wants to have any comments. Okay. We'll move on to new business, then. We'll move on to item, first item under new business. If you remember several meetings ago, we had approved the sewer lining repair for bid. The lowest bid was hair construction. If you remember, we had allocated $550,000, that was part of the $625,000 budget. $550 for sewer lining repair and, one moment here. Let me finish what I'm talking here in a little bit. $550,000 was for sewer lining repair, and $75,000 was for the flow monitoring. As we, as the bids came in, if you remember, they came in about $90,000 higher than the engineer's estimate. We did approve that to move forward. We still think it's best to pay for these funds out of ARPA instead of capital, because there's work that needs to get done. Also, the flow monitoring, we budgeted $75,000, and it came in at just about $79,000. So that $95,610, a majority of that is for the sewer lining repair that came in at a little over $90,000 above budget, and an additional $4,000 to $5,000 for the flow monitoring. This, with the recommendation to keep this simple how we've done this, we always take the money as a recommendation from the committees. We take it to the ARPA meeting, this Committee of Whole, and we send it to council for approval, and that's where it gets added into this allocation project sheet that you have. The ESU committee unanimously requested it be forwarded to ARPA committee for the $95,610. We're bringing it before you tonight to ask for a recommendation to allocate this to city council for approval with ARPA funds to do the whole sewer project with ARPA money.
I'll make, I'll make the allocation, Mayor, of $95,610 for the repairs for the sanitary sewer project.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones to allocate $95,610 of ARPA money to the full city council for approval for the sewer lining project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Alderwoman Johnson.
If I, you may have said this, I'm sorry. This last $95,000 should complete the project.
It'll a hundred percent complete the project. And it also includes the manhole, Mr. Zach Newton wanted the manhole addition that would be put in over by Hillcrest that would be good for cleaning out there. And basically, that's going to take care of everything in Hillcrest, and that area there's going to be a hundred percent complete. We won't worry about it for fifty years. So, and then you can see what the manholes are happening right now down in, along Maple or Riverview, and then we'll go from there. But that, that would do the project one hundred percent, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Ocinga.
Mayor, just refresh my memory. We saw that video where the water was running in nonstop. That's what these repairs are going to take care of.
That's, that's what the extra $90,000 was for, where we saw that water running in nonstop. This is, so they're doing the manholes now, where it's leaking into the manholes right now, whether it's from above or six feet down. This is the actual sewer lines that are running underneath the street, and that's where you saw that, they were calling them gushers, where the water was just running in in certain areas. That's repairing that, along with a partial collapse over just north of Maple Street, along with repairing underneath the railroad that goes from Kinkke Junior High School over to Sunnyside area and all that, so. But that is repairing all this, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call. I'll start over here. I'll go with Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Naveras.
Aye.
Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Ocinga.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderwoman Malone-Marshall. We will send that to full city council. We'll bring that to city council on May 1st. What I'd like to do is, as we have May 1st, obviously, we're going to try not to make that too heavy of a night, because it is a celebration of everyone that's being sworn in. But because this has kind of been worked with this council here, I'll put that on the beginning agenda information to move forward with, so that our new order persons don't come in and not just speed on exactly where we've been at that. So we'll put that on beginning business, so. Okay, next is, this also came out of ESU. The ESU committee recommended unanimous vote to bring this to ARPA. This is a recommendation to allocate $284,277.15 for the purchase of EnviroSite Rover XHD camera. Basically, that's our camera that runs the sewer lines. Our camera has, we tried to fix it about five years ago, spent some good money on it. You all saw the pictures, hopefully, if you're at ESU. This camera is ten times better than what we have now. The one we have now is a hundred pounds and has, it's like taking a picture with an iPhone six. This is now HD, they can televise, the camera itself is over $200,000, and it's only this big. But it does some, it actually rotates back forth, does the sewer lines, big sewer lines, small ones. And we, quite frankly, we need it for reviewing our sewer lines and for our lateral transfers and everything else. We can get the camera within a couple weeks. The cargo van, like all vehicles, who knows? We hope we could have it in six to eight months, we could get it in a year, we could get it in three months, we just don't know. In discussing with Comptroller Kubal, this is one of those things we need, we also believe that with this purchase, that we can start doing the sewer lining in other parts of the city now that we're monitoring the flows. We'll find out where our worst flow parts are within the city, and then they can go, our staff can go and do the sewer lining and find those videos where those gushers are at, instead of having to outsource it. Last time we did that, I believe Zach said it was about $160,000 cost to get that done. Hopefully, we can do that in-house now, so hopefully this will start to pay for itself as we figure out what other parts of the city that we need to do sewer lining repair. Again, in talking to Comptroller Kubal, it is a sewer item. It would be much easier to allocate it out of ARPA funding versus capital. Capital is starting to get a little bit low. We've got it there, but we're trying to keep it for that major problem that might sneak up on us that we're not aware of. Hope it doesn't happen, knock on wood, but whether it's a sinkhole in the city, or a bridge repair, or something that might be needed, that we've got money for that. So ESU, as I said, recommended this to ARPA, that would then hopefully recommend it to city council for $284,277.15 for the purchase of the camera and the four transit cargo van.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Naveras.
I'll second.
Second from Alderman Ocinga. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Marzak.
Just recall the statement, you know, that it's a lot of money, but, you know, it should be good for a couple decades like the old ones, so, you know, you divide it up, it starts bringing the money down. But it's a big per, big purchase initially, but, you know, I think the cost will go a long way.
Yeah, I believe the truck is from, if I remember correctly, 1997, or maybe, maybe it's, could be older, it could be 1988. It's old, yeah. And the camera itself is well over twenty years old, too. So, and I believe Zach said that this, this also includes in it a five-year maintenance program, not a warranty, a maintenance program, where we'll send the camera back once a year to have it cleaned, retrofitted, you know, everything done to make sure. It's this little piece, but it's very expensive, so that also includes that in there, so. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Alderwoman Malone-Marshall.
Aye.
Alderman Baron.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderman Ocinga.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Naveras.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Okay. Nine zero, we will forward this to city council, and the same thing, I'll probably put that on early on the agenda, just so everybody's been dealing with it here. The next one's a little discussion here. I know we feel like we're spending some ARPA money here, but we had a very successful summer youth program last year. We budgeted a hun, we allocated $160,000 a year ago to have our Hiring Youth Keys Program that HR Director Carolyn Crowe's well has been very active on. We were bringing that back again this year. We spent about $95,000 last year, the $160. This year, Director Crowe's well, last year we had thirty-one youth. She right now easily has thirty-five to thirty-six youth that could be available. We actually have probably, oh, well over fifty, maybe as many as sixty people that have applied for positions. We just don't have the capacity as a city to basically have fifty-plus youth with the, I'll call it, the department personnel being able to watch over and everything. But DPW has said they'll take on fifteen single youth, the ESU department said they'll take on five, CDA will take on five, the library will take on five. So we want to do that again, a lot of single, different places there. But obviously, if you figure out we spent $95,000 last year, and you figure out that we got $160,000, that only leaves you about $65,000. That's not enough money to run the program for the whole year. And Director Crowe's well would like to make it bigger and better. In talking with Comptroller Kubal, and talking with Director Crowe's well today, it's a, it's a hit or miss. We just don't know how much it'll ultimately cost, but we figure each youth is about $4,400 per the summer that they earn. It just depends if they're in college, if they're in high school, when they get out of school, how long they work till when they got to go back, but that's about on average. In talking about it, if we were to allocate another $100,000, that's, that sounds like a lot, that sounds like 165. We think that'd be more than ample to expand the program for another summer. I know Director Crowe's well is always thinking, already thinking about next summer of how we can do this, and maybe we can help pay with some different things and get some jobs within some of the businesses within the community, too, but she's going to work on that this summer while we continue our program for another year. There's also another piece component to this. I did receive a call from State's Attorney Jim Rowe. He runs the Justice Academy. He has that program that he's been running for a while. He works with the school district and using their facilities, and they right now have programming for the summer, which is twelve weeks, for four hours a day, basically from twelve to four. He would like to have programming for eight hours a day, which would be from twelve to eight for that twelve-week period for the Justice Academy and that youth. To do that, he's short about basically $31,200 to make it a full program for the whole twelve weeks, and make it an eight-hour day for programming and work for that, for the Justice Academy group. These are youth that, we'll just sit there and say there has been some minor issues, and they're trying to go on the right path, and he's using this program to make sure they, they get the help and the needed, whether it's with their families or with the youth and through programming and stuff. So it's a very effective program that he's been putting together and running for a while with a lot of different, you know, different things that he does. The school district's got their money into it, their facilities into it, he's got his grants into it. He asked me and said, I understand if you say no, but, he said, I would like to see if the city could step up and help with the youth and fund that $31,200. I told him the timing was well. He had called me last week that we're coming to ARPA committee. I think it's a good program. I said I would like to, I said basically that we'll find some funding for it. We don't have enough in our general operating budget to fund 31,200, so I thought I'd bring it to the ARPA committee as part of the, also the Summer Keys Program, and see if we could kind of lump it all together for our youth, and trying to keep as many opportunities for our summer youth this year. So basically, what I, I kind of ran some numbers. I was thinking if, if, what the council's thoughts were, but if we were to allocate $100,000 to the Youth Keys Program, I think that would be more than ample to get us through the summer. We may have more left over, kind of like the Francine Drive, that we can allocate it back to ARPA, but we think that would be a safe number. And then if the council would be willing to also allocate in there $31,200 for the Justice, Justice Academy. So basically, my recommendation was, how does the council feel about allocating $135,000 additionally to the Summer Keys Program and Justice Academy Program for this summer for our youth? So I'm looking for questions, comments, and then we can go into what council thinks is a good or bad idea, so. Alderman Marzak.
How long's he been running that program?
He's been running it for a couple years now, I believe. He does it with the fishing program and some other things, and so his, his goal here is, he said, he's got funding for it to only be four hours a day, and he wants to make it an eight-hour day program while they're off school.
Right, right.
Obviously, there's a track record that it's, you know, productive.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Are there other communities getting to the Justice Academy?
Not that I'm aware of. It's mostly Kankakee youth. Why, it's not standard only on the City of Kankakee. It is mostly Kankakee youth, but there is people that would be with Kankakee addresses, maybe not within the city. I believe it is also, there could be some Hopkins Park, Capembrooke, and some other people, but a majority, it's countywide, but a majority are Kankakee youth.
Mayor, what's the age range for participants in that?
In the Keys Program or in the, in the Justice Academy?
Justice Academy.
I don't know that answer. I'm going to say, I don't know. I don't want to guess. I'd say it's younger than what we, our program is fifteen and up. I believe his is much younger. I think they get down to thirteen, maybe even eleven, twelve, or twelve. But I'd have to verify that, and I could get you back to that before city council. Alderman Naveras.
Did the county provided any money for them?
It's, it's a county-run program through the State's Attorney's Office, but It's a county-run program through the State's Attorney's Office, but I don't know. He just, he reached out to me as a city of Kankakee. But the answer is, have they allocated any of their ARPA money towards it? I do not know that answer. He's been running it through his grants and his funding that he has through his charitable foundation there, so. Alderman Marzak.
I'd just like to, you know, see if they wouldn't match us, you know? Match us, you know, dollar for dollar.
Who matched?
County, Kankakee County. I'm not, I'm not...
On the 31-2?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, but I think if they would, if they'd match us, then that would go, you know, a long way. It'd be worth an ask. If they won't ask, you know, if they won't match it, then we'll fund it, but sure would be nice to ask them.
Now that you said that, they don't know. I teach a negotiation 101.
For the Keys Program, do they have to live in the city of Kankakee, or just have a Kankakee?
We've been doing it with a Kankakee address, so. We, we did have several names here that are from other areas, and we actually referred, we have people that were from outside of Kankakee, from Sun River Terrace, Mantino, Bourbonay, Bradley, Ashcombe, Reddick, all that. We did refer them to some other opportunities, whether it be through park districts, through school districts, through other things there, so. We're really trying to concentrate on the youth of the city of Kankakee since it is city of Kankakee's taxpayer money, so.
And how many kids are getting...
Last year, we did 31. Carolyn would like to do 41. I think it's a little, we'll see. I'm thinking, we've already know, I have, we know we have slots for at least 36 right now, so when we get to that 41, I think that would be difficult to get to, but I think we'd ask even for more money, but we're trying to expand it more than last year. So we're hoping that, right now, she gave as it to me, we have 21 that, we have 21 that were with us last year, so this will be year two for them. We'd be paying them $16 an hour. Last year, they made 15. The people that are coming back would be making 16, and there are 22 pending youth right now that should be going through and making sure that they fit the requirements for the program. Alderman Jones, did you have a question?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just so excited that we are doing this and we're funding it, because this is pennies compared to what it truly represents, and I think, I think State's Attorney Rowe for what he's doing, and like I said, these, this is just pennies compared to what it really costs, and I think what we're doing in the city to keep the kids off the street, and I'm excited about it, because as long as they stay busy, you know, you know, I'm really, I'm really happy about this, because this is just pennies. This is not, and since it's on my Francine project, I'll take that, we'll pay the 100 out of that. On that Francine project, we did get the 100.
Still leave 188.
Yeah, still leave 100. I'm good, I am, I am good, you know, I'm good.
Alderman Jones is throwing money around like nothing.
Hey, we already, it was already spent, so we might have just...
Alderman Baron.
Mayor, would it be better to group it together with a motion, or do you want it...
I thought we'd group it together and then we'd just, but I want everyone to know that part of that summer programming would be 31-2 to Justice Academy, so. We can separate it, or we can group it, however you want to do it, so. I was looking at, it's basically summer programming that we're doing for our youth is what we're doing, but we can separate it out if you want. It won't have to be two different checks, obviously. Obviously, part of this money we're allocating to ourselves for payroll, the other part would be a check that would be cut to the State's Attorney's Office. They did say the State's Attorney's Office will handle, Comptroller Kubal will get a smile out of this, they will handle all the payroll, all the funding and everything for Justice Academy. We'll have nothing to do except for just know that we're funding their program, so. Alderman Marzak.
When does his program start?
When school, it's, it's, his program's already active.
Okay.
So right now, his program is active, it's just not, you know, with kids in school, different things, it's a couple hours, it's weeknights, it's different things. What he's got is programming set up for a 12-week period over the summer from noon till 4 o'clock. He wants to make it from noon till 8 o'clock. He wants to make it an eight-hour day program. And he has the staffing and everybody available to do, to do the programming and the work and the, I won't call volunteer, but the oversight of the youth, so. He's just short the money, and so he reached out, and I just, his programs have been pretty good, and he's done a lot really for the city of Kankakee, too, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the $135,000 program, including, we broke it down.
So there's a motion from Alderman Navarez to fund $135,000 to the Keys Program and the Justice Academy Program.
I'll suck in that.
So second from Alderman Jones. This would be a recommendation to send to city, city council for full approval. Is there any questions or comments?
Just a follow-up.
Alderman O'Brien.
Alderman Marzak's point, I do think it's worth approaching the county just to see if they would be interested in supporting it as well, given that it's countywide in nature.
Okay. I can make that call tomorrow morning. Alderwoman Johnson.
On top of that, I think some of the other communities, even if they don't have as many students, Bourbonay and Mantino.
For the, for the Justice Academy part you're talking about, yes, okay.